All right, Mary, if you could help us with the roll call, please.
Elder Person, Henry.
Here.
Jim Barron, absent. Jackie Valdi.
Here.
Wayne Dean.
Here.
Matt Grimmer, absent. Phil Katson.
President.
Tim Iker.
Here.
Mayor Atwell.
President.
Administrator Hafner.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move on to item number four, public hearing. Public hearing number one, City of Dellafield, 2022 proposed budget and tax levy. Purpose of this public hearing is to hear a public comment on the proposed 2022 City of Dellafield budget. Is there anyone that would list? You were quick, Mary, you're first. That's how we do it. Remind everybody we have a full house tonight. I'm going to ask you to please make sure you come up and say your name and address, and we're going to limit you to three minutes because we have a number of people, as you can tell, that want to speak, and we want to get on with business. You don't necessarily have to repeat what other people say, you can say that you agree with them and so forth. You don't have to use all three minutes, but I will ask you to wrap it up in three minutes. We do this to be respectful to everybody in the room, so everybody gets a chance to speak. So appreciate your cooperation in that, thank you. Go ahead, Mary.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Daniel, and I live here in Dellafield at 309 Wisconsin Avenue. I'd like to speak this evening about the public hearing, number two, the 2022 proposed budget. Last November, I asked Steve Rotz how many people were signed up for notifying me via the city website. The answer was 106 for common council and 104 for planned commission. I hope that these numbers have gone up since it is my personal feeling that our methods of communication and the city for awareness of what is going on needs a little improvement. So our City of Dellafield five-year capital improvements program budget, I'd like to speak about page 106. It's the St. John's Bay Public Boat Dock for access to downtown for $60,000. The 2021 budget recommendations, it was noted for 128, and in the final budget, $30,000 was approved to be moved to 2022. 2022 has $30,000 plus a grant for $30,000 and a request for $60,000 this year. So total possible is 120, which is really close to the original amount of 128 last year. Moving on to the Fish Hatchery roof replacement, just kind of an FYI, the existing roof was put on in 1997, so it will be 25 years old in 2022. Photos provided by the roofing company have me personally a little concerned because I know that water damage is very costly. The Liberty Park Line Engineering Conceptual Design Site Planning Investigation for Grant Funding for $50,000. I have a question. Who will be administering this and have the final decision? Some facts, the site was once one of the six ponds associated with the Fish Hatchery, and it has a possible sewer lateral and electrical connection, but no water unless a well is drilled. I'm very pleased, Tom, you'll love it, to see the costs of snow removal and maintenance attached to the linear feet of our paths. The maintenance of amenities has hurt our operating budget tremendously. Nega Wica Path Number One last year was budgeted for $380,000, has 6,200 lineal feet, maintenance cost estimated at $6,624 per year. The Nega Wica Road Path Number Two, which is on the 2022 budget, has a cost budget of $235,1,800 lineal feet, so $5,400 maintenance cost. So I'm wondering where I can find the cost of the maintenance of the Nega Wica Path Number One shown in the 2022 operating budget. I believe maintenance should be considered as a capital project as part of it. Evelyn Avenue and East Evanshire for the 2022 budget are considerably less and have projected maintenance that is less than the Nega Wica Road Path Number Two. So my question for all of you as we do budgets is what has been done to help our operating budget for the year? Passing the referendum last year was a Band-Aid that saved people's jobs for the next four years. We have amenities in place that need to be paid for and maintained. Our trail debt went up almost double with the addition of the Nega Wica Road Path Number One, in addition to the maintenance cost of $6,600. So a special thank you to Molly Schneider, who's not here tonight, for thinking outside the box when it came to getting me copies of the pages that I needed for less money than, which would have been close to $50 for the whole book. Last year's budget book had 108 pages, this year it's 212. So thank you, everyone, this is not an easy job, and I appreciate it.
Great, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mary.
Who would like to be next? Come on up.
Brian Faracy here, 852 Scenic Heights Drive in our beautiful city of Dellafield, and I will briefly speak in support of the stage at Liberty Park. It's a fabulous idea for downtown Dellafield, for the whole community and surrounding communities. We are working volunteers and those of us on the board documenting the support for the project in the city, and I will have that for you on the 15th. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Who would like to be next? Come on up.
Kelly Bukowski, 180 Country Court. I just want to speak in reference to the Liberty Park, that I am in favor of funding for the Liberty Park and putting it in the budget.
Thank you.
My name, my name is Christine Anderson. I live at 1527 Milwaukee Street in Dellafield. I've been in Dellafield for 30 some years. I'm a board member for the Dellafield Arts Foundation, and I just wanted to let you know that I thought that having the stage at Liberty Park would be fabulous for the city. I think that we can really say that we should be proud of our city for being a vibrant community, and I think that would just add to, to the restaurants, to the, to the businesses, and also the activities that we have, not only for our families, but also the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Had your hand up before I could even turn my head.
Following instructions.
Right. Doing a nice job, thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzie Austin, and I'm a resident of Dellafield. I live at 411 Bleecker Street, and I'm here to agree with Chris Anderson and Brian Faracy on funding for the stage at Liberty Park.
Great, thank you. Who would like to be next? Yep, come on up.
I'm Paula Larson. I live at 924 Lake Drive, Dellafield, and I also support the stage at Liberty Park. What better thing can represent the city and make it more vibrant and add so much positive things to performance, music, all of those things that really can contribute to making this just a great small town? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments for the budget? For the budget? Roger, come on up.
I'm Roger Yolo, 2729 Ridley Road, Heartland, but obviously in the City of Dellafield, and I'm here to offer my support for the dredging in the budget for the long-talked-about silt trap at the Bark River, the mouth of the Bark River, which is now a silt island there. It's identified in page 123 of the budget, and I'm just in support of that. It's finally, the city is adding some money to dredging. The lake obviously benefits all of us. We're called Lake Country for a reason. We have a lake, and it's silting in a lot of areas. The burden, past burden of dredging has been given off to the residents in repairing rights, and it's finally, great to see something in the budget and for the silt trap and removal of the silt island, the mouth of the Bark River. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Sir, come on up.
Good evening. Tom Buttram, 3201 Sylvester Drive, Heartland, Wisconsin. Tackle the gentleman's thoughts around dredging. I approve not only what he said with the investment from the neighbors, but there's also the safety and there's the navigation. Every year, the water level is getting lower, or sediment is getting higher, the water level is getting thinner. So I know last year, there was comments to me that there wasn't enough time to digest the information. It was kind of new to some people, but we're a year older, we've had a chance to digest it, and I would ask that we approve it this year. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Come on up, Mike.
Mike Hausman, 3135 Sylvester Drive, and I'm also the Chair of the Lake Welfare Committee. Thanks for putting the dredging into the budget. I probably should have come up and talked to you more about it. You've at least got the presentation in there. A couple of things real quickly. Number one, when I brought it to the Lake Welfare Committee, it was at two-thirds of the cost. So the Lake Welfare Committee actually added to it, seeing it was that big of an issue, and approved it unanimously. So from my perspective, after being on Lake Welfare for a few years, it's becoming more and more of an issue, and I think people are getting it more so. So with that, I also want to thank all of you. You put a lot of time into this, so we are a better city for it, so thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Come on up.
Monique Henry, 2804 Burries Road. I'm also very much in favor of the dredging. I ran the dredging project for our bay when we did that, and the results were incredibly good. One of the most common misperceptions is that the, if one person pays more taxes, that's just more taxes for the city, but the more that the lake residents pay, the less everybody else pays. So if your district isn't on the lake and they don't see that this benefits them, we just haven't spread enough information, because that does, the more we pay, the less everybody else pays. And we're willing to do that because the quality of the lake is that important. Our bay has since been deemed by the DNR to have one of the best fish habitats because they can't spawn in the muck, and now they're spawning in our bay, and the fishermen are out there constantly. We're swimming, it's great. It is very dangerous to have the muck there because it's sticky. If somebody falls in, they're not getting out, so please consider that. I'd also briefly like to support Brian Dorro and the Gun Club. Anybody that knows Brian knows he's not going to risk his reputation to do something that isn't going to work and it isn't going to be good, so I absolutely back that. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comments. Who would like to be next? Anyone else for the budget? Seeing none, the budget public hearing is now closed. Oh, did I miss somebody? Oh, come on up. Sorry.
No problem.
Closed with one exception.
My name is Bob Krantz. I'm also on the Arts Foundation, and I'm interested in having a stage here at Liberty Park. I think it would really benefit our community. I live on Forest Hills Drive in Dellafield, and I just think it would be something that would draw in other, from other small communities, and I think it would be something they would look at us and say, boy, they're doing a great thing for us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will move on to item number five, approval of the minutes of the 2018-2021 regular meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions passes. Okay, now we're going to have number six, City of Dellafield citizens' comments for anything else on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to speak to citizens' comments for any other items on the agenda? Come on up.
Hi there, I'm Vicki Rock. I live at 360 Evelyn Avenue. I'm also piggybacking on the ladies' comments of supporting the indoor trap shooting facility, encouraging you to change the code and text amendment to the Dellafield Oaks Range and permit by right. We have an eighth grader at Kettle Marine District, he's on the trap team. This is his first year in it, loves it. It's been a great thing for him, something to keep him off of Playstation is first, but also it's a great skill that he's learning. So he's a member of that team, and it would provide a great opportunity for him to continue to improve in that sport, and also I think it proves to be a future place of employment for him as well, as he loves it, just the environment, the people are wonderful people that are involved in the sport. And then also, lastly, and I'm not making any promises, but my cousin did medal in the Olympics this past summer in trap, so there's a very good chance we could bring a medal to the City of Dellafield. No pressure to my son, who's at home doing homework right now. That is all, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to go next?
Hello, my, hi. My name is Joan Zapecki. I live at N8W30524 Cherokee Trail, and my property shares a significant lot line with Heartland Sportsman's Club property. First off, I want to, you know, thank Brian for coming forward and agreeing to move all the shooting indoors. I think that's absolutely huge. We're very appreciative of that. You know, when the Gun Club was, when the CUP was ordered to be granted to them back in October, November of last year, the neighbors got together and started talking about how we were going to, you know, make sure that the safety and the noise and our property value issues were addressed. And I can say that, you know, working and talking with Brian, he's saying all the right things. You know, addressing the safety by moving the shooting indoors, addressing the, hopefully all the noise by moving it indoors. And so, well, we would encourage you to move forward in a prudent way where there is some accountability. This is a chance for a fresh start. The old CUP disappears, and whether you do the B6 with the text amendment or look at a conditional use permit, we would like to be involved in talking about what those parameters are. And really, you know, it's a chance to have new life for this property. We want, I personally want Brian to be very successful, and I hope that he will be. The plans look beautiful, but, you know, we have some continued concerns about zoning accountability from the standpoint of, this has been going on for 40-plus years. When I bought my property, the town still owned the property, and the Gun Club was closed. And then we, we got the saga of the city of taking over the property, and then it reopening, and all those kinds of things. So it's a chance to start fresh. There are some buildings that have been grandfathered, that have been there illegally for a number of years. It would be nice to be able to eliminate those buildings from the property and show, you know, as we work with Brian, as Brian works with the neighbors, that in good faith, we can move forward and really have a truly fresh start for the property, really have a safe property and something that adds value, not something that takes value away from all of our homes. So hopefully, we'll work with you in the next weeks to come up with something that is accommodating and reasonable for all, and in the end, makes Brian successful.
Great, thank you for your comments. Who would like to be next? Come on up, lady in the back. I'll get you next.
Hi, my name's Lisa Bingenheimer, and I've been here a couple times already to read letters from citizens. This time, I'm here representing myself. I live at 4,000 West Lincoln in Milwaukee. Do you want me to spell my last name?
Sure.
So I'm here representing the Wisconsin 2A team. We're a statewide network of Second Amendment supporters that work to get pro-Second Amendment candidates elected, get Second Amendment legislation passed, and help people like Brian advance Second Amendment causes. From what I understand, the current zoning allows for bowling alleys, swimming pools, gymnasiums, and other activities that are deemed substantially similar. From a personal standpoint, my family deems family outings as FAT, Family Activity Team events. My daughter, husband, and I have repeatedly been to the shooting range as a FAT activity. My sisters and I have gone shooting as a girls' night. My husband and his buddies have gone shooting. We've also gone bowling, we've been to trampoline parks, and we've gone swimming as FAT activities. To our family, shooting is a recreational amusement activity. Wisconsin high schools have bowling teams, they have swim teams, they have gymnastic teams, and last week's committee meeting was attended by members of the Kettle Marine High School Shooting and Trap Team, and one of the moms was just here. Even high schools in Wisconsin view shooting as a recreational activity. So I hope the council sees this as the same. And just on a personal side note, I've been here for four meetings, and each time that I came out, I ate downtown, I love the restaurants, I've been here, and I really do support the stage. I think you guys should do it. And I can almost guarantee that other visitors that come out to this indoor shooting range will do the same as I have the last four times I've been here. So I appreciate your time.
Great, thank you for your comments. Okay, this young man right here. Brought the hardware.
Yes. Hello, my name is Tyler Kenaby. I am 14 years old, and I go to Arrowhead High School. I'm here today to show my support for shooting sports. I'm in favor of having an indoor shooting facility closer to home. Currently, I am a member of the Lake Country Action Shooters Team, coached by Mr. Richmond, my coach. This summer, I competed at the Scholastic Action Shooting Program's National Competition in Ohio, where our team placed second in the country with our PCC rifles and fourth in the 22-caliber optic rifle division. Individually, I took third place with my PCC rifle and third with my 22-caliber pistol. Our team currently practices outdoors, which means we can only practice for roughly six, seven months over the year. An indoor range would also allow us to practice year-round. This type of facility was, would also allow me to continue with my firearms, safety, and training education. In addition, a facility like this could help us grow the support, the sport of competitive youth shooting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Tyler, can I have your address?
N56W26872 Lisbon Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to be next? Come on up.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Fugino, 2704 Burries Road in Heartland. I'm honored to be here to speak with you on Brian's behalf in the sport, the Dellafield Oaks Range. We're encouraging you to change the code and add a text amendment so the Dellafield Oaks Range is permitted use by right. Brian and I have known each other for over four years, and I'm excited about this opportunity for him and the Lake Country to see this proposal realized. One of the values Brian and I share is the importance of being able to defend yourself and your personal property. This is one of the main reasons people purchase firearms, for personal defense of themselves and their property. I work in downtown Milwaukee, so safety is always a concern of mine. I constantly, I'm constantly aware of my environment and surroundings and the need to feel safe. One way I've created a sense of personal safety and the ability to defend myself is earning a black belt in taekwondo and staying physically fit. I also teach fitness classes in Oconomock. I have taught community fitness classes for over 22 years, including cardio kickboxing, strength training, self-defense, and personal training. One of the most important things I teach my students is safety and the importance of remaining physically fit. The stronger your body is, the less chance of accidents and injuries, especially as we age. I also educate them about using proper form when exercising to achieve their goals safely. I have completed a gun safety course, and I feel that I have gained the education and proper knowledge to handle a gun safely. The better educated and trained we are about how to use firearms and care for our weapons, the less chance for accidents and injuries. I completed my training, feel confident and empowered, and I hope the other women will take the opportunity to feel the same as I did. The Dellafield Oaks Range will provide for the proper education and training necessary for self-defense, safety, and the proper use of firearms. This facility will also bring community together, where community members have a place to meet, learn about gun safety, train to use them properly, and share those common interests together. I'm very supportive of this community, Brian's efforts in the development of the Dellafield Oaks Range, the need for people to be able to defend themselves, and the ability to enjoy their interests safely with the knowledge gained through education and proper training. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, who would like to be next?
My name is Paul Beal. I live at 538 South Lappam Peak. I would like to express my support for the, for the range.
Please talk into the mic so people on TV can hear you.
I'm sorry. I would like to express my support for the range. I learned how to shoot there. I've been a resident in Dellafield for about 30 years as a homeowner. I know Brian Dorro, I haven't talked to him before this meeting. I'm retired law enforcement. As a taxpayer, and, you know, I understand the history of it, I reviewed the minutes, I looked at. Our intent of zoning, if you open the city's ordinance for zoning, says to promote morality, prosperity. You know, Brian, Brian Dorro is a very upstanding citizen. He's prior law enforcement. I believe he set up the range for WCTC. I was a supervisor at the Sheriff's Department in the city of Pewaki before I retired. There's a range there, the WCTC range. The population density is far greater there. There have been no issues with that range. I'm sure there would probably be no issues with this range. Legally, as a taxpayer, I look at it and say, they're throwing an olive branch to say, we're going to end outdoor shooting. That range has been there for 40, 50 years. I learned how to shoot there. I'm in my 50s, I was 12, I went through hunter safety there. It's been there a long time. I understand it, friends that live around it that don't like the shooting. If the ability to resolve it with indoor shooting, you know, safe range, we have indoor shooting, the city of Pewaki has the indoor shooting range for law enforcement. The one in the city, the village of Pewaki on the edge of the city of Pewaki is open to the public. Shooting sports are good. You know, I learned how to shoot. I was a cop for 31 years, retired last year. I pay my taxes. You know, I looked at conditional use permits online, you know, Act 67 changed it a couple years ago. It says right in there, your opinion on whether or not you like what the activity is should not bear on it. I do not want you to spend money litigating a range when there's no legal justification to stop it. If they're willing to put an indoor range there and make that a viable property, please amend our ordinance to allow for it. I mean, I read, I read the minutes, and it says 52 different things. We can't account for every business, but we have a good, upstanding citizen that is willing to make a good business there, that's not going to hurt anything, that is not by any other businesses, and is going to be inside. What can it harm? You know, am I pro-shooting? Yes, I'm pro-shooting, I belong to Oconomock Gun Club, but I've lived in this community my, most of my adult life, and I'm a taxpayer. As a taxpayer, please don't waste money litigating something that, based on what I've looked at online, there's no legal justification to stop it. Now, go into a meeting, close meeting with the planning committee and look at it, but please, please don't litigate this. This is an olive branch to resolve this and have a prosperous business, which the zoning intends to have in this city. So allow it. I don't like everything out there. I'm still not happy in paying taxes, but to the stadium, but we do. So please allow it. That's all I'll say.
Great, appreciate your comments. Who would like to be next? Come on up.
Good evening, John Scholl, 130 Stockst drive. I'm not quite as lucky as the last guy, I'm still a cop. And I work in Milwaukee County. Anyways, I think the planning commission made a mistake last week when I came and talked to them in terms of what, what the ordinance says, what's permitted, and what they need to look at. That being said, I guess ultimately it's in your hands, and I hope that you all consider what everyone's saying here. It seems like there's a lot of support. It seems like there's a lot of support for this range and I'm sure it's going to be safe. I'll take my 11-year-old son there. And as a dad, that's probably the biggest thing I could say, that I'd take my son there and feel comfortable with him being there, right? You know, like I said last week at the plan commission, I don't know Brian personally, but I know some of the people that are involved in this project. And I've been shooting at WCTC and going there for training for a little over 20 years. And these are people that make safety such a concern that it's almost mind-boggling. Like, it drives me nuts, like I said last week, and some of the things that they make us do. So it's going to be a very safe place. And, and I think, I don't know, the lady from whatever group it was that said she came to support Second Amendment issues, she's right. I think there's going to be a lot of people that come and, and other businesses are going to benefit from having this out here. I know when I go shooting with guys, we go out to Milford Hills, have a good time, we spend a bunch of money out there and, and neighboring businesses. So I hope you make the right decision and vote yes. Thanks.
Thank you. Who'd like to be next? Oh, way in the back, back there.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tricia Caddock and I'm actually here reading and addressing the council tonight and the community on behalf of my dear friend Laura and her husband Jeff Otto, who regretfully could not be here to speak in regards to their letter to support Brian Dorrell. And they reside at 2640 Peninsula Drive in Delafield. So I'm going to read the following letter. "To my fellow community residents and our leadership, it is our understanding that a member of our community, Mr. Brian Dorrell, and the Heartland Sportsman's Club would like permission to conduct, excuse me, to construct an indoor firearms range on club property. We've reviewed Mr. Dorrell's impressive list of personal and professional experiences involving the safe, meaningful, and valuable instruction on the proper use of firearms for sport and safety. If we're being completely honest, it's staggering to think someone with his background, one, lives in our quiet community, and two, is ready to add value and meaning to the existing club site. Based on our research, first and third-party studies, information from the FBI's Uniform Crime Reporting Team, and the major cities, Chiefs Association, and more, this proposal appears to be an attempt at improving safety, security, and functional offerings of the Heartland Sportsman's Club. Regardless of where you fall on the quote firearms debate end quote, wide availability and access to proper firearms education and training is a topic that receives considerable bipartisan support at local, state, and national levels. Friends, this is our chance for our community to create a destination for the instruction on responsible gun use. Now, we can fight community growth, firearm purchase trends, and the opportunity to add much-needed features to the club property, not just bringing more business to the club, but more importantly, to the community, or we can help. We realize safety was a concern in the past, but reading the Journal Sentinel's coverage of these events and Mr. Dorrell's commitment to not only secure the current facilities, but add an indoor range, which we are markedly more safe and secure, certainly mitigated any worries we may have had. So please, on our behalf and the many silent voices in this community who support this growth, approve this expansion. And know that by doing so, you're also approving the further growth for the Heartland, Delafield, and all of our communities here. We encourage you to vote for permitted use by right. Sincerely, Jeff and Laura Otto, proud members of this community." Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Carol Hersberg. I live at 507 Sanctuary Lane. I, like others have said, am here to encourage you to change the code and add the text amendment so the Delafield Oaks Range is permitted by right. As some of you heard last week, I moved here approximately eight years ago, shortly after my husband passed away. When it was obvious I was going to become widowed, I approached him and said, "You know what? I really would like to get a handgun. Would you help me?" He was very supportive. He said, "Let's take a concealed carry class together," and he helped me purchase my first gun. As I said last week, from the moment I picked up that gun, I knew, you don't just buy a gun and you're done. You need ongoing training. You need ongoing practice. In my quest to fulfill that goal within myself, I traveled to many of the ranges we have in the metropolitan Milwaukee area. They vary greatly. Some are in unsafe parts of town. Some are old with poor ventilation, poor sound, sound reduction. And then there are some that are state-of-the-art. Three of them, well, there's four of them as far as I've been to, two of them are about 45 minutes from here. One of them is roughly a half hour, not exactly conducive to ongoing training. The one that I liked the best closed, the WCTC range. In my quest to become a better person with gun safety, I joined a women's organization and we meet monthly. We have an hour in-service on education and then we have an hour service, in-service on the range with, with, range rather, with NRA instructors. We were all devastated when the WCTC range closed. It had superior ventilation, great soundproofing, wonderful staff, and there was always a range safety officer on the firing range. Women happen to make up almost, well, in the past two years, women make up the highest amount of gun, I'm sorry, I'm saying this all wrong. Women make up the newest growing aggregate within the gun community. Within the past two years, we have purchased over almost 50% of all new guns. When you think about that, that's a big, huge jump. And we are very lucky to have Brian in this community. I wholeheartedly support him. My organization supports him, and we look forward to having another superior range in the area out here. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Come on up. The lady in the back with the darker hair and, well, right there, you. Both have dark hair and glasses.
Hello, I'm Robin Schumacher. I live at West 302 North 970 Maple Avenue. I live directly across the street from the proposed gun club. And my husband, Robin, and I are here to support Brian and his efforts. We had absolutely no issues with the former gun club or its members. Everyone was very respectful. And when Brian approached us with his plan to move the gun club indoors, that just seemed even better to us. So as a neighbor, we would like to support Brian.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, we'll have you with the bandana.
Hi, my name is Victoria Chaloner. I live at 1407 North Bresland in the Village of Summit. I'm going to just, to make this short and sweet, echo everything the lady in red said. I believe her name was Carol. And my story is this. In 2015, my daughter started college. And two weeks after she started, a former neighbor showed up on campus and began stalking her. And this was a very tough time for us. It was very shocking to hear this. We had to get the college campus, or the college police involved, and he was banned from campus. However, at the end of school, he showed up in our neighborhood and we had to get a restraining order. He was charged with trespassing and all sorts of other stuff. The next year, he again showed up on campus. This has been an ongoing thing for quite a while. Finally, he seems to have disappeared. But the long and the short of it is, during this time, my husband and I both got our concealed carry classes. And I'm very excited with the prospect of having more education and situational training and that type of thing to become a more responsible weapons owner. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comment.
My name is Mike Sothard. I live at West 302 North 898 Maple Avenue. I probably have the most property that butts up against this gun club. I want this, I want everybody here to know that number one, you never heard anything from me on Heartland Sportsman's Club, pros, cons, or anything, okay? This property has been in my family for 160 years that we have butted up against it. So no, I am not a neighbor that just moved in here that's complaining, okay? What I do want to say is a few things. First off, this is not a Second Amendment issue. This is a zoning issue. We have been stepped on as neighbors, and I sat back on it for the last 50 years with that club, going in and out of litigation. Was it closed at this time? Was it open at this time? What did they do wrong? What did they do right? Mr. Dorrell, I am certainly sure, from everybody that has said, talked here, that your reputation is great. No questions about it. Don't have a problem with that. Have a problem with the property. There's numerous problems with it. You have rectified some by saying you're going to go underground with it. And I think that's a phenomenal, phenomenal idea. Okay, are there's others still there? Yes. You're in a B, you want to be in a B6 zoning. No other business, out of those 52 businesses that everybody says is out there, can do what you're asking to do. And that's discharge a firearm. None. Okay? And all we are asking in protection for ourselves, as you've probably known, I can trust you. I don't know about everybody up here. We don't know what's going to happen 10 years from now, 20 years from now. It was a gun club before me, gun club with me, it's going to be a gun club after me. All we're trying to do, we're not trying to go against you. We are trying to have some say in the matter of what our neighbor is going to do. Because whether it was in the town of Delafield, or whether it was in the city of Delafield, we did not get that. Okay? I did not get anything as far as communication, and this goes to the city, when everything got taken place, when the gun club was annexed the first time. Don't know why, but I didn't. Okay? I have to justify to the city on things. I have to justify to the town on things. We're not saying, "Don't build it, Brian." That's not the point. When you build it, it, I want it to be the Taj Mahal. I want it to be the best thing out there, so it is the best thing for the city. And they can look at it, and people can come in and look at it and say, "Wow, look what the city can do with a developer, with the residents in that community," and it all worked out. We do not want you to fail, okay? But we do want to have some say back to you, not that we're just forgot about. And remember, it's a B6 zoning. Personally, I don't know which is the better, the conditional use or the modification of the B6, but one of those two has to be in. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Who'd like to be next? Who would like to be next? Oh, okay, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Nelson Phillips at 1370 Fairhaven Boulevard in Elm Grove. I'm a good friend of Brian's. I trust his character. I know his family. I know he'll do the right thing for the community. I know that his experience and expertise, quite frankly, with firearms and firearm safety is a good thing for the community and I support it. Appreciate your time.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Lady back there? Come on up. Oh, come on up. Didn't see you sitting there.
Hi, I'm Lisa Whiting-Mao. I live at 186 Country Court. I just want to give my support for the gun range. For the past 20 years, my cousin owns a gun range right downtown Deerfield, Wisconsin. So I volunteer there over the past 15 years. And I see the amount of education that goes through with women and men that come in, police officers. And he's right in the center of town. So I'm here to say I support what we have here in Delafield possibly, because the amount of safety standards that he's, he's put in over the years and he hasn't had any issues. And also for Liberty Park. As a community, as a parent of three children, we need a place where people can gather and have music and blankets and families out to take part of this beautiful community that we have. Because I know we have musicians in the area that want to be involved. And I think that would definitely be a benefit for our community, to bring our families together. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for coming. Who'd like to be next? Anyone else? Anyone? Come on up. Any other shy people? You better get ready because we're going to close them up.
Hi, my name is Margaret Dodd. I'm a friend of Brian Dorrell's. I'm a Navy veteran. I had weapons training in the military, but that was 30-some years ago. I got myself recertified and I'm a gun owner. And my biggest thing, even being a military vet and having weapons training years ago, I was still very intimidated taking my, not intimidated, but I felt like I needed a refresher course. So I went and got that. And then I went out with a gun instructor to all the different ranges in the area, not in the most desirable areas for a female. I mean, this is a perfect area for more females to learn about weapons trainings, get the practice in a, a family-type atmosphere that Brian's going to create there. I would feel comfortable bringing my daughter there for training because I trust Brian and his safety with his track record and everything. So as a military veteran, I'm just saying, we always got to keep our skills refreshed and fresh. And I just think the gun club would just be an asset to the community, period. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments.
Your address?
Yeah.
844 New Castle Court, where?
Okay, any other folks? Come on up in the back. Sometimes I can't see if you're behind that pole, too.
Hi, I'm Libby Finley and I live at 3553 Broken Bow Trail. And I'm one of those shy people in the back. I wasn't planning on speaking, but because there's so much support of the gun club, I did want to get up and say that I am not in favor of guns, selling guns, gun clubs, none of the above. And we moved out here eight years ago. The gun club has been closed that whole time. Come to find out, there is a gun club back there. It's, it sounds like, you know, that's not the question. The question is now, at this point, because it's going to be there, is it going to be safe? And can we make it as least, the least amount of impact as possible? Because last week, at the plan commission meeting, there was a very impactful man who spoke, who's a firefighter, who lives right on Maple, Maplefield's path. And the traffic on there, it's compared to, you know, you hear so much about this Waukesha County Gun Club. Yeah, that makes sense. That's a big college, major road, plenty of, you know, existing infrastructure versus this is tucked back in. There's houses all around on this side. There are some businesses, but mostly it's a quiet residential area. Then you have this dark country road that has hills and it's windy and there's, you know, dead fawns and muskrats. It's like, I hate to see, you know, people, animal, I just, and now we're going to have this big gun club with all these lights and this huge parking lot. It's going to be a big change. So just to keep in mind, having, the city having control over the situation, I think is very important, the hours, you know, the safety, the having as, just, I guess to wrap it up, because I know I don't have a lot of time, the least impact as possible would be much appreciated. And having control over the situation to make sure that down the road, oh, they don't add outdoor shooting or add whatever, I don't know. But, I mean, already there's alcohol, selling guns, you know, a lot already that's a part of this. So we need to make sure there's control over the situation.
Appreciate you coming up. Young man in the back.
My name's Travis Webb. And I'm 18 and I've been interested in guns for a little bit.
Name and address, please.
Address is 1088 Yosemite Road. And I've been interested in guns for a little bit. And I think that one of the most important things would be training and safety. And with everyone else who's with everyone else who's come up here and said it before, that, that has been made very paramount in this, and that would be enabled, and every people I know, people my age, are interested in guns, and that's not going to change. I think the way that we can go about training and making sure that everyone's educated in how to use them, and how to responsibly use them, is the best way we can move forward, and this seems like a really great way to do that, that's close to home, and would make everyone around here, who, a lot of people do have guns around here, more safe with those guns.
Great, thank you for coming up. Anyone else? Anyone else, yep, gal in the blue?
Nancy Waters, I live at 1030 Quinlan Drive in Peewaqui. I am not a gun owner, never shot a gun, never hunted, actually hearing some of these women, I think it would be a very good and safe environment in which to learn, but I think we're overlooking some of the business aspects. I mean, there is a business there that is going to be something, at some point, it's been vacant for a long time. I was the Peewaqui Chamber President for six years, and I've been in nonprofit fundraising. And one of the things that Brian does bring to the table is event space. I know the rustic manner is like two years out, looking for weddings, people are having weekday weddings, so I think it is a wonderful enhancement to be able to have this event space. I do know Brian Doro, and you will not find anybody that is more stellar, that is above board, that is going to make sure that there, that everything is run very, very well and very safe. You all know his reputation. We're doing a lot of what-ifs, what if this, what if somebody else owns it, and kind of maybe even creating rules for things that haven't even happened, or may never happen. So think of it, too, you know, as a business aspect, the people that are involved in this project couldn't be any better, the plans you've seen, the event space, plus the safety aspects, there are gun clubs and gun owners, those people that are coming to that gun club are responsible people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I don't think I see anybody else. So citizens' comments are now closed. Alrighty, we will move on to number seven, the consent agenda. Appears we have nothing on the consent agenda. So we'll move on to number eight, boards, committees, and commission reports. Anything under licenses? Nope? Okay, then we'll go to B, Planning Commission. Stryker?
Yes. Sorry about that, Mike. Yeah, we did have a meeting last week, Wednesday, as you understand, and we talked about a few things, we'll get to the gun club in a second, I'll just give you a couple highlights. One is the Hawthorne Farms subdivision, which is just north of St. John of our Church in District 7, northwest side of the city, came for their final plat review, they've sold all their lots, I think, maybe just two, two left.
They did.
Yeah, and so that development went along faster and better than I think you even would have expected. So that's, that's good news. Also, we've, we issued a permit or two for some businesses moving in downtown. And also, we had, let's see what else we had, oh, a little bit of an update to the plans for the 705 Genesee Street, nothing aesthetic, it's just really a matter of easements and other things for emergency access to the building, so that's a good sign that they're fine tuning things there, so that we might see some activity. I asked them to please dig a hole right away, but, so there's something else going on downtown that looks promising. And now, on to the topic of, I know we've got it on our list here.
Do you want to give a summary, or you just want me to go right into the agenda?
Why don't you bring up the agenda item, then I can give a summary of how, how we voted, because it's a little bit confusing.
Okay, sounds good. All right, we'll move on to, to A, DELC 0825994, 701 Maple Avenue, owner, Heartland Sportsman's Club, applicant Brian Doro. Applicant is requesting consideration and action on a request that an indoor gun range be considered as a similar use to other uses specified in the B6 commercial holding district. No outdoor gun ranges are proposed. So the question here is, would the council agree that it is similar, or would they say that it is not? That is the question.
And so I'll, I'll just say what the, the Plan Commission, we had a similar audience, little, little longer, and more speakers, talking to us about gun, gun rights, the activity, and this was really about more, the issue at hand was really, if we approve a gun range there, how would we do it? And we had, we had a few options. One is to amend the conditional use that exists, so it's transferable, and then changed to fit the business plan that Mr. Doro has. One would be to deny the whole activity outright. One would be to, which was the, which we were asked to act on, which was what Mr. Doro asked us to reply to, and that would be to consider it a similar use to something like an arcade, or a bowling alley, or any of those other things that are already approved in that district, to just simply say, "Okay, nice business plan, you fit, let's get on to other things about the site plan and that, to, to just simply approve it." The route that we went was, was to, the discussion was really around how we could do what some of the, some of the citizens have asked us to do, and that would be to be more specific as far as the conditions that it would be allowed to operate under, if we were to allow an indoor range. And so, although the motion here passed five to one with Dan Johenski against the recommendation, he was, I don't think I'm putting words in his mouth to say that, he was against simply approving it as a use similar in nature to the rest of the uses in B6. He was in the camp to say he would prefer a conditional use permit be granted as the vehicle to allow it, the other five were in favor of a text amendment to the existing code, to permit it as a use in B6, subject to the things we put into the code, very specific to indoor gun ranges. And so that's where we are today. The recommendation from the, from the Plan Commission to us was to deny the user's request to allow it, just as is, without specific conditions or a text amendment, or conditional use. So that's what we're here to, to act on. And then we have the item 2B, which should follow up as far as, okay, if we agree with the Plan Commission, where do we go from there? Am I having that about right?
Yep, about right, so really, just either we agree with the recommendation from the Planning Commission, deny the applicant's request that it's a similar use, or we disagree with the Plan and Commission, and say that it is a similar use. This is the question. Mr. Hammons, am I speaking in any way?
Yes. That's the issue for the council, but the second aspect is that they...
Because that, that's what we have action on, right?
Right.
After we take action, then we can have discussion on the other.
On, on, yeah, how you want to proceed with the, with the text amendment request, or recommendation from the Plan Commission.
We'd be looking for a motion to either, again, affirm that we agree with, we believe the applicant is correct, and it is a similar use, or that we do not.
I have a couple of questions, though, because I, I get the impression that even people who aren't into going to a shooting range, under the right conditions, would be very supportive. When I saw an indoor one, I'm like, "Yeah," you know, "It's a great idea." But I, I get nervous as to what funny funky language do we need to do it, so I think we want to do it right, and there's a lot right that I see, and I'm not, I'm not a gun person, but I, I just want to, I don't even really know if I completely understand, like, I don't want people to get the idea that we're going to vote that down as recommended by the Plan Commission, but that means we're not going to support the action?
No, no.
So I'm just getting ahead of myself?
Because we all want to be clear on that, right?
Right, yeah.
I mean, the question at hand here, do we believe, would you want to make a motion to agree with the applicant that this is a similar use?
Well, the recommendation is that it's not, that's what's in front of you.
Recommendation is, it is not a similar use. You want to make an emotion to, to, can do it that way, too, right? Affirm that you agree with the Plan Commission, it is not a similar use.
Can I ask a question? Do we have any conditions on any of the, the other things in the code? Are there any conditions on any of those? So if we say that it's a similar use, are there any conditions on any of the things that are similar?
If it's, if it's a similar use, the applicant simply submits a site plan and plan of operation, and go through that approval process, that's it.
So it'd be the Plan Commission's normal discretion with regards to site plan design, and review and approval, you know, they can require traffic analysis, and things like that, review lighting plans, and...
Landscape.
So there's no, there's no restrictions on that?
It's just whether you think it's similar or not similar, that, that's what we need to take action on.
Yeah, we don't sometimes do any of that, we always do it all. So, I mean, color of the building, the type of signage, traffic study, emergency access, turnarounds, all that stuff, that's why Plan Commission is so fun, because we get to get into, we really get into people's business, and the business plan of operation. And I neglected to mention our, our, one other thing we approved on, on last Wednesday was the dental, dental office, that's right on Highway C and 94, just a little bit east of there. We got down to height and location of a fence to screen traffic, turnaround, lighting for a specific neighbor. So, I mean, for, before we approved it. So all that's still going to go through, so there are concerns that other people raised about some of those other issues that aren't in front of us right now, those, those go into the site, specific site implementation plan, and the, and the building, and all that other fun stuff. So we're not, he just doesn't build what he, if, if we were to prove this through a text amendment, and it gets done, or however else, he still gets to deal with all the fun of showing us the materials and colors, and location, and lighting.
Okay, so...
I move that we follow the Plan Commission's recommendation that an indoor shooting range is not a, right, without going through a CUP.
The question we're talking about is, is it, or is it not a similar use?
And I said it is not a similar use.
Is not a similar use.
That's what the Plan Commission recommended.
Right. But they didn't, the other part, the other part of that is not part of the...
So you're saying I can't add that to my amendment?
It's not part, it's not, it's not on for discussion.
Well, that was just the part that we agree with the Plan Commission.
That it's not a similar use.
Correct.
You got that? Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, before we go to that, I do have discussion. You know, I wrote on the top of my paper this, why, and I'm not sure who's going to answer, Jim's going to answer, who, why is, why is a change in the text amendment a benefit to the citizens of Delafield over the control of a CUP?
So I, just, if you don't mind, I mean, we're going to discuss that in the next section.
We can talk about, if, if you find it's a similar use, and that's really not, not an issue, so if you find that it's not, and you get to the text amendment, then I think that's, Wayne, that's when we bring that up. Okay?
All good? Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Sentience passes. Okay, I'd like to have the applicant come up. If you can give us an update on where you are currently with your planning and so forth, just like you did with the Planning Commission, that would be great.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Since it's my first opportunity to meet with all of you, I'm just going to go through how I started this endeavor in early spring. My first priority was to engage the neighbors, both in the city and the town of Delafield. Every one I view was a stakeholder and involved in this process. I've knocked on over 80 doors on the property, all adjacent to the property, and east of, of Maple Avenue. I've held a community meeting to, which was to really initiate what I was proposing to the neighborhoods, that was one of the first things that I did, and, you know, to really describe the vision for the 34 acres of land. I've had ongoing dialogue, almost daily, I maintain open lines of communication, frequent updates, anytime I made a change, I, I went to Joan, usually she was kind of the stakeholder for the group, and, and I continue to knock on doors all the way to yesterday. My background, extensive law enforcement, training, education, national security, homeland security, 29 years. My plan is to build an indoor, highly respected range that involves sales, retail, training, education, personal protection, enrichment courses, a club, and an area for events. Based on my desire to maintain positive relationships and trust with the neighbors, I look at this as a new beginning. The two, when I initially had my plan, I was going to come forward with limited outdoor shooting. Based on their objections to that, their opposition, some of the first meetings I attended, there were probably 40 to 50 people really opposing it. I wasn't going to die on that hill. And so I subsequently, as of last week, eliminated all outdoor shooting, never to be heard of again. The second point is, I've asked, was asked, like, can you build it, hypothetic is proposal, can you put in certain areas? I did. I found the middle of the property that has two large berms, that have completely surrounded by large trees, evergreen trees, so not, you can't even see it unless you're flying over with a drone or a helicopter. And then the last part is, and to ensure, because the neighbors, again, very respectful, and I really, you know, got to meet with them, safety and sound were their two biggest concerns, and I said I will address both of those. Not only will we build the indoor range, indoor rifle, indoor pistol, I will bury the ranges below the surface, so they will be completely soundproof, and they will be at the highest level of safety that you can create. Now, I will caution, this indoor range works for my business plan. However, as we know, the outdoor Heartland Gun Club, their business plan is all outdoor shooting. My next phase for today is to, the proposal for the, the ranges, the Delafield Oaks Range, really wanted to draw on the community, if you've been there, it's a very long driveway, full of beautiful trees, but I'm asking for permitted use by right. That is, that would be my gauge, that I would move forward. As outlined in the Delafield Code Language, which addresses similar use provision, it says when permitted use may be allowed, if determined by the commission, to be similar to be approved by the common council. B6 holding zone lists 52 entities, bowling alley, gymnasium, swimming pool, indoor tennis, indoor theater, taverns, restaurants, schools, trade, technical, et cetera. And so after reading that list, I drove around the city of Delafield the last couple days, thinking, what in the city of Delafield is comparable to this? And I went to the Hillside Theater. So if I was not coming in front of you, and I was a property owner, I could probably bring a movie theater forward. Well, anyone that's been inside the Hillside Theater would know, the occupancy for that is 2,100, 2,114 auditoriums, and about 1,500 parking spots, okay? So, as I mentioned, what's, what's currently there, what do all these share in common? Of course, they're not identical, they're not identical at all. They are tied to recreation, they are tied to Richmond, in, in social activities, educational opportunities, and community outreach. An indoor firearm range has this in common, and is similar, and some of the things I'm proposing, a clubhouse, retail, they're identical, they're listed in that zone currently. And I also say, it's 34 acres of land, it's, it's a great piece of land, it has its own property rights as well. Now, I know outdoor shooting is not similar. I would never come in front of you and say outdoor shooting is similar than what is listed in B6. It's not. All these activities are indoor, as well as my proposal. The reason's, I think everybody wants a new start. And, and again, I, I saw that, as I was knocking everybody, everybody really wants a new start. They want to put this behind, they want something positive, they want to move forward. They want to remove the bitterness, you know, there still is, you know, some of the residents didn't come, that, that have been opposing it in the future, they didn't come tonight for some reason, but there's still some bitterness there. I want to build trusted relationships, I want a very, very respected venue, community destination, a family venue, and I also want the reassurances, and that's why I'm asking for permitted use. Thank you.
I have some questions. So you know that I'm in support of an indoor range. I did not have any problem when you first come to my door and expect it, and started talking about this. I'm also proud to see all the people here talk about the Kettle Marine Team since my son started it in 2015, and I coached Matty Purdue at the Olympics, so I'm, I'm not against gun owning. My concern is about something you said the other day, that I want you to clarify. You know the tellers in poker, right?
The what?
Tell in poker?
I don't.
When it kind of gives us indication of what you might be thinking. You started out your dissertation Wednesday night by saying, "At this time, there will be no outdoor shooting." Can you explain that further?
Hold on, Dean, you're reading into it.
That's what you said, I'm reading your quote, "At this time."
So I'm telling all of you, there will never be outdoor shooting again. You've been constantly coming at me... coming at me for the outdoor shooting. You've been coming, you know, with these different laws. There will be outdoor shooting, not at this time, ever.
Well, you can't say ever.
Ever.
You can't say that. What if you don't own the property?
I'm telling you, ever.
Well, I have a right to defend my people. So, my people I represent. Are you familiar with the Range Act 895?
I am.
Okay. In it, it says that a club, a shooting range, doesn't say indoor/outdoor, it says a range in existence prior to July 13, 2010, may continue to operate free from municipal restriction between 6:00 AM and 11:00 AM at night. All the legislature has to do is to change that date, as they have done, how many times, Jim? Twice already, three times? And then you could come back, or a future owner, maybe not you, and say, we have the right to exist as an indoor/outdoor shooting range. You might not ever say it, but a future owner could. Now, that's why I'm fighting for a CUP, because under a CUP, we could have some control. Where with you get your permitted use by right, the city loses that future control. That's all I'm simply saying. Now, when you went to the town, previous, when you were thinking about buying property on 16 and KE, and then you went to the town to talk about the CUP, you didn't ask for permitted use then. On Friday, October 8th, in a meeting you had with me, John Barker, and Joan Specky, you said that you were going to apply for a new CUP for an indoor range. Yet, when you submitted your paperwork to the city just a few days later, you changed it and didn't apply for a CUP and asked for permitted use. What changed and why is it so important for you to have permitted use as opposed to operating under a CUP?
So, just for the record, I feel like I'm on cross defense, but that's okay.
I have to fight for my people. So, yes, if I have to do it, I'm passionate about this.
Where are your people? They're not here. They're all supporting this. It's the right thing to do. They're not here. They're supporting this. But let me tell you, so going to the town, I never asked for anything. I never went through any approval process.
No, but you went to the town to ask about the potential, correct?
Went for the, but it was a discussion. I didn't ask for potential. It was never put on the agenda. So, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
I'm going for, you were originally going to go for a CUP in either the town and now the city. What changed? Why did you change from your conversation with me on the 8th, that you're going to a CUP, to now asking for permitted use?
So, let's go back to the town. I know nothing about the town, what you're referring to. We, we.
You had a meet with the town?
I met with the town. As an idea, it never was pursued. The buyer didn't want to sell. Okay? So, let's make that clear. There was never any discussion about a conditional use permit. There was another, no discussion as potentially a range, and that's where it ended. Okay?
Okay, they answered the second part, then.
So, the second part is, when I met with you, the big thing on the table is I was ending outdoor shooting and then putting the indoor ranges below the surface. Okay? And in, and in my mind, we were, I'm not applying, I'm not pursuing the existing CU that has all the things to do with outdoor shooting. Okay? And from there, there's a, there's a gap. As I looked into this more, met with my advisors, it was a prudent way for me, for my investors, to pursue a permitted use by right. And so, yes, that, that change was made. But again, I was not pursuing the conditional use permit as the gun club has.
I know that. But it was a new CUP. I directly asked you if you're going to pursue a new CUP, and you said yes.
Well, what, I'm putting something new. At that time, it wasn't, it was potentially a new CU, but now, after, again, meeting with advisors.
Then I'll ask you, why is it in the city's interest, best interest, to grant you permitted use as opposed to requesting a CUP?
Yeah. So, as I mentioned, you know, this is a new beginning. Okay? And there, there's still bitterness. And I don't certainly want to have to deal with headaches, time and time again, by a, a small group of people perhaps, when I know this is going to be an outstanding location, it's going to be done the right way, I'm investing a lot of money into this. And again, I want reassurances. And in my mind, permitted use by right would give me that reassurance.
And you don't think you'd have that under a CUP?
I don't. I don't. And I won't pursue it.
Because our CUP says that if there's going to be any changes, or if we pull it, we have to have reason why to do it.
Yeah.
So.
Not happening. Not happening.
All right, my last question. When you did go talk to the town, whether it was for a CUP, but you did approach the town, correct? Who went with you?
What's that?
Who went with you?
What do you mean?
How does this apply to what we're doing here?
I'm not answering. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not answering who went with me. Enough.
Can we get, yeah, I don't see the relevance of that. Back to what.
I don't have a right to ask a question.
No, you don't.
It's not.
We're talking about the city of Dellafield, and we're talking about the issue at hand. This isn't an inquisition of what Brian's done over his entire life. We're talking about the issue at hand.
One question. Just one question.
It won't be answered.
Wasn't an inquisition about his entire life.
All right. Are there any other questions?
I do. I have some questions. And probably more for the attorney. What is the difference between the CUP and the permit for us and for them? What are the differences?
Nice and loud.
All right. So, a permitted use is a use that's permitted as a matter of right, as was articulated by Mr. Dorrell. By way of illustration, I think I've used this many times in front of the Plan Commission, but if you have a property that's two acres in size and sold for single-family residential use, you have a right to put your home on there, right? You have to apply for the permit or whatever, but you have a right to do that. If you have a conditional, if it's a conditional use, you have to apply for a, a permit, and the city can impose conditions on that, with that house that you're going to build, for example. Now, unfortunately, the, the, there is still a little bit of a state of flux on conditional uses, because a couple of years ago, the legislature changed the law, and they said that, that if you have a conditional use, you must grant the conditional use if the applicant makes all of the, meets all of the conditions that are articulated in the ordinance. All right? Now, I know in the memo that you got from Amy, she says if you meet all of the conditions in the ordinance and conditions imposed by the city. But that last part of the phrase is a little bit unclear yet, because there are no case law on this. As a matter of fact, and I'm sure the council is aware of this, and maybe all general public isn't, but the city was sued recently for that Castle Senior Living project that we turned down. One of the arguments there is that we, we allowed those types of facilities in a residential, in any district. There were no conditions articulated in the ordinance. Therefore, as a matter of law, you have to approve it. So, the difference then between a conditional use and a permitted use is you have to apply for conditional use, but you have to articulate in your ordinance all of the conditions that you're going to impose. Those same conditions can be required by the city as a part of the site plan and plan of operation. One example I would give is in the, in the CU that we currently have, for Heartland Sportsman's Club, we have this provision in there about range officers, what their training is, they have to be on site, all of these different requirements. It's in the conditional use permit, right? If you do a, a conditional use text amendment, you're going to need to, you should put all of those things in now. If you do a permitted use, you can still require all of that, but it's, it's required as a part of the plan of operation. I would say that function, as a practical matter, the distinction between what the city can require of this property, of the applicant, whether it's a conditional use or permitted use, the real difference is with a conditional use, you have to publish a notice in the paper that you're going to, and have a public hearing on it. All right? That, that doesn't apply with a permitted use, although you can, still, even if it's a permitted use, you can publish in the paper, Dellafield Oaks, or whatever it's called, will be presenting their site plan and plan of operation on such and such a date, any, the public's invited to attend. You can do that, but it's not required. So, I don't know, to, to get down to it, if you have, if you were to go with a text amendment with a permitted use, and I think the recommendation of the Plan Commission was to go that route.
It was.
You, you would, you would say that the conditions that they recommended are that the, the indoor range be permitted, and that no outdoor ranges are allowed as a part of that use.
And they wanted that to be very clear.
Yeah, so that no, so that it can't be expanded in, in the, in the future. And the second is, there can be no other conditional uses on the property, which means the existing conditional use has to be surrendered. All right? That's what, that was their recommendation.
Which ends that saga.
Yeah. That, that was, that was their recommendation. I do want to address this, this, the sports shooting, the statute 895, 527. It does say, yeah, if you were, if you were a lawful use as of July 2013, I think it says here, you can continue as, as, to use that property, notwithstanding any local zoning ordinances. But you, that, that doesn't mean that you can ignore the local zoning ordinances. It just means that if you were a lawful use as of that date, we can't impose new conditions. But this was not. This was not a lawful use. It's, it's being proposed now in 2021 and probably wouldn't be approved with 2022. But as Wayne pointed out, the legislature can change that date, and they've done it before. They could come along three years from now and say, if you were a lawful use as of July 2022, you can continue, notwithstanding any changes in the zoning code. But we can't do anything about that. Right? Because you remember, the city, or any local municipality, can only do and exercise the authority granted to them by the state. So, if the state steps in and limits zoning on, on sports shooting ranges, it applies to the city of Dellafield and everybody else. And that's one of those what-if things. If they do it in the future, they do it in the future. My best advice for everybody that has interests is, you know, keep following that, because when they, every time the, the legislature meets, they, they put these things in the bill, and you have to be in contact with your representative and follow those things. But if that happens in the future, there's nothing you can do about it. So, what you have before you tonight, Dan, is really a request by the Plan Commissioner that, their recommendation, that they go with a text amendment to allow indoor shooting ranges with no exterior shooting ranges on the property. All other conditional uses must be surrendered. And, and then it would have to be subject to a site plan and a plan of operation. And that's for all of those details, some of which were brought up today, the access, the lighting, the outdoor uses. There were other things that were brought up. I know at the Plan Commission, there was a question about lead remediation and all. All of those matters are addressed as a part of the site plan and plan of operation. If you go with a conditional use rather than a permitted use, that can be done, but then we get, we, we're going to have to nail down all of those conditions that you want in and put them right in the ordinance.
So.
I just want to make sure there's no loopholes for an outdoor shooting.
Well, we, it, the ordinance, the text will be drafted, so outdoor ranges will not be permitted. And the only, quote, loophole is if the state steps in at some point in the future, and we have no control over that.
Even under a CUP?
Even under a CUP. Whether, if the state changes that July 2013 date to July 2022, it matters not whether they're operating as a CU or as a permitted use, because it says if you're operating as, as a lawful use, CU, permitted use, they're both lawful. We can't control that.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, we actually have a little bit more control if we do the permitted use, because it's applying to him specifically, where in the future, we would still be able to set different conditions.
I, I think the, the city has the ability to probably exercise a greater degree of control as a permitted use, because it's subject to a site plan and a plan of operation. And, and you can deal with all of those specifics rather than trying to sit here in advance of the site plan and put them all in the ordinance. If you go with a conditional use, if that's the decision, okay, it's going to be, it's going to have, the condition use is going to be, it's going to be a lot like that Heartland Sports Club conditional use permit of all the different requirements in it. The code will have to be that specific.
So ultimately, what we're trying to accomplish here, according to the agenda, is feedback to the Planning Commission that, that the common council, and it's not a vote, it's just your feedback on, on heading down, their recommendation on heading down the path of, of a code amendment.
Do you need a motion on what our feedback is?
No, no motion. I think we're just, we wanted to bring it to you. We don't want to waste the app, they did not want to waste the applicant's time to have them go through all this work and head down this path and do the, to have you then, you know, basically vote no. So, we're looking for feedback from each of the council members as to whether they feel this is a reasonable path or not.
All right.
That's what we're, that, that's what we're here, give the applicant feedback on.
Well, then I.
From each person, please.
I believe that the permitted use makes a whole lot more sense. It gives you the reassurance that we're taking you seriously, and I think it gives us a bit more control over specific projects. So, I would be in favor of that.
And I, I would agree, because I really appreciate, where you explained it, I was not, not sure. And I just want to make sure that we keep it indoors, because I think it's a brilliant plan. There are, just a cute little picture, page 11, on the site map, that says future shotgun range. That, that.
That, well, that would be phase two, okay? And that would be indoor. Everything is indoor.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
No, no, appreciate that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because, yeah, it was just like a little square box.
You will never have me come back and ask for outdoor shooting.
All right. Then I will take the recommendation of the Plan Commission, and I appreciate the clarification, Jim.
One other point, we are, the Plan Commission is asking for the types of conditions you want to see.
Yeah. And I think we both.
Well, they are.
If it's just flat out indoor, that's, that's easy.
Their recommendation was indoor, wasn't with, and specifically no outdoor, and that any, there'd be no other conditional use on the property.
Right. Okay.
I agree with that.
But if there's, so if there's something, there's something else that comes to mind that you'd want to suggest.
We'd love to hear it now, or if you think of it later.
Well, the only question or concern I would have would be like guns and liquor seem like a, just like how do you provide for safety? But that would be something the Plan Commission would be addressing.
That's plan of operation.
Right, plan of operation, so.
So, I would assume, I would assume there'd be rules that you're, you're drinking after you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Lock those bad boys off.
That needs to be clarified. I'd like that.
Yes.
And if I could just ask, based on where the new buildings are located, and the parking lot is located, and the driveway is located, somebody can help me out, where could it be possible to even put an outdoor range? Is there enough room, if a future person wanted to add a range, is there actually available space?
It's 30 something acres.
Yeah, it is.
34 acres.
But to get the necessary bermin and the like, I mean, I, so there is? The answer is there, there is?
There is. I mean, well, it's spacious. It goes back, again, I, I look at it, the area that we're putting the building is literally between two berms, existing berms. It's isolated. But to the, the west, I mean, there's, it's a pretty expansive piece of property. So, again, it's, it's large. Not to say anybody wants to put an indoor range, not going there. It's not going to happen.
I'll, I'll bring something up that's, that's a little wonky, but the, as far as the difference in my, when I was thinking this through, as far as conditional use versus permitted use, provided, you know, no outdoor shooting. For one, I think just the flat-out law that we're not allowing outdoor shooting ranges, period, is pretty, is pretty simple. And the conditional use, we don't allow a gun range under a conditional use right now.
No, we repealed that after.
So, we repealed it. We'd have to change code to allow a conditional use, to allow this to go forward, or amend the conditional use to me. I have not had a good experience over my history with the Plan Commission, just having to deal with whether or not we're covering all the exceptions correctly in permitted, in these CUPs. They're kind of like exceptions, and they became, they were easier before Act 67. Now, it seems like we just saw with Castle Senior Living. But, but one thing with allowing an indoor range in B6, it's not a lot, but there'd be a couple other properties in the city where you could potentially put an indoor gun range if we changed the code. And where I think that actually comes into an advantage is we're, we're talking, when you're talking about the state changing text, the city could very easily, in two years or tomorrow, start the process to say, you know, well, we love all these gun lovers, we don't care where the lead is flying, we want outdoor shooting wherever you can fit it in. I mean, we could, we could change our own law to allow outdoor ranges, given whatever. I think that if we have it as a permitted use, and it's conceivable it could occur in other areas of the city, you wouldn't be an island with the gun club in defending the limits on outdoor shooting. You'd have two or three other aldermen representing their district saying, it's conceivable we could get a indoor range over here, and maybe they'd want outdoor shooting too. I, I just think the pool of support or being against permitting outdoor shooting in the future would be bigger if we had it as a permitted use, and not as a one-off perpetuating these kind of tedious CUPs. So, that's some of my logic behind it. And I don't know if we're talking, but, but anyway, I, I saw, I think it's really, really darn close to all those, many of those other uses in the area. But, you know, the specific activity is, is different, you know? And we do, we look at, you know, drinking in establishments as a specific license and handled differently. Certainly, things like adult entertainment, like dance. Certainly things like adult entertainment, like dancing places are one-offs. It's just a different activity, same with like medical centers, too. There's a different licensing that goes on. So I think this is the, I'm reinforcing the, you know, how the Plan Commission's discussion went. And, yeah, just, you know, we'll have our work cut out for us going through the SIP and that, and the final approval. So that'll be an ongoing discussion where the people, I'm sure, will continue to come and talk about the lighting, about the traffic, about the, et cetera, hours of operation, all that.
You know, and I'll tell you, Joan and I had a really nice conversation earlier today. And whether there's alerts, you know, and whether that, I've been transparent from day one, okay? I've knocked on everyone's door, I've sat in the back of theirs, you know? So I don't want that to stop. You know, I don't, just because this may get through, I want the relationship to continue on, cultivate the relationship. They're neighbors, hopefully they become customers. And so it's just, this is, nothing's a win, you know, I come here a win, I don't look at it that way. I want the cultivation of the relationship to continue, you know, bring them to the table. I've tried to do that from day one, and I'll continue it. And I alert them, you know? I went and sat with Wayne and Joan and John, I went to their place. I didn't have to, you know, it wasn't required of me. You know, I'm being accused of, why didn't you do this? Or why didn't you? I went, I practically reached out to them. It wasn't part of the process. I've done that from day one. You can ask all of the residents.
Well, I mean, I've been here when, when the other team was here, not you, and there were a sea of people, and not one of them spoke in support of the gun club. So it's a dramatic difference that, and it tells me that's what you should do. And so thank you for doing it right, or at least starting off on.
But that's the venue I want to have.
Yeah, and that's what I hope you do, because I'll come find you if you know.
A desired location. You know, I don't want people, you know, say anything negative about it. I just want it to be highly respected and highly positive. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Bill, do you have any feedback for the applicant?
I guess I'd like to just. What I'd just like to clarify is, we've taken a vote.
We're not voting, it's just feedback.
On what the Plan Commission said. We took a vote on that, which was not to accept it as.
As similar.
As similar. Okay. So I believe that is correct. And trying to see all of the conditions in advance for the conditional use permit always seems, there's always something missing. There's always some kind of a catch-22 or something. So it sounds like, from what I understand, there's probably more opportunities just in the site plan to try and control some of those things. So I think, I appreciate you coming forward with the thought on those things, talking to the people that you have. And as was mentioned, it sounds like there's a lot of people that support the position. I do still have reservations about it, so this is not just a one-off for me, but I think it's the beginning of the process. I'll leave there, and I.
So we all understand that procedurally, what'll happen is, there'll be a text amendment drafted in accordance with the discussion at the Plan Commission, go to the Plan Commission on the 15th, and then they'll set a public hearing, which won't be till sometime in December. And so it isn't as if a decision is being made now, we're just saying this is what the discussion is. And once that public hearing is conducted, perhaps the Plan Commission may recommend additional, you know, additions to the text, other than the two we've talked about, as it could occur, obviously, when it gets back to the council. So it'll go through that process, and wouldn't get back to the council till, at least January, right? Tom? Yeah?
Yeah, just to clarify, you mentioned Plan Commission on the 15th, it's Plan Commission on the 17th.
17th.
Yep.
Okay. I'm getting forgetful, so.
Just don't want everyone showing up at the council meeting again.
Council's on the 15th, right?
Yeah, on the 17th, and then they'll set the public hearing.
Okay. Well, great, I appreciate everybody's feedback. I appreciate the applicant for coming.
Thank you.
And we'll see you at the next Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.
It's going to be a party.
Okay, 8C, Lake Welfare Committee. Phil? Any meeting?
Covered them already in the last meeting.
Got it. Okay, 8D, Park and Recreation Commission. Mr. Grimmer is absent, so I'll refer you to the minutes if there was a meeting. 8E, Public Works Committee, Mr. Barron is absent. Was there a meeting, do you know, Tom?
Not since last meeting.
Okay. 8F, Delahart Commission, Mr. Iker, a meeting?
There's not been a meeting. Next meeting is a Christmas party, so.
Great.
Not everyone's welcome. Not enough cake.
Okay, 8G, Police Commission. Phil, no meeting, I presume? Okay, Jackie. 8H, Library Board.
There's, there are minutes posted, but there is no new news, because we haven't met since our last meeting.
Excellent. Okay, 8I, Zoning Board of Appeals, no meeting. 8J, Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Barron's not here, I'll refer you to the minutes. Same with Lake Country Fire and Rescue, Board and Commission. Other committees, Dan, Danielle?
We did not meet.
No meeting. Okay, we are ripping through the meetings. Woo! 9, There's No Unfinished Business. Number 10, Mayor's Report. I'll just say that we had an encouraging meeting with some folks at Hendrick's in continuing to have that moved forward, and they are absolutely going to be moving forward here pretty soon. So all good news to share. Okay, 11, New Business. A, Discussion Regarding the 2022 Proposed Budget and Public Comments Received During the Budget Public Hearing.
I wanted to comment just on Mary Daniel's comment about the St. John's pier. I wanted to just clarify that, because I think the amount, the $60,000, I understood that to be the total amount, correct? Not that plus the $230,000?
That is correct.
That's correct. So the total amount for that project is $60,000, and 30 of it will be funded by the city, and 30 of it will be from the grant. So that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Is that correct, Tom?
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Good. Phil, we got something?
Yes. They weren't issues brought up by people, so I don't know if they're, I just, one clarifying question, Tom, was the fund balance? We've been trying to, we want to try and keep it at 20%, but do you know how much of the fund balance is actually inaccessible because it's actually non-spendable, restricted, committed or assigned funds?
So the fund balance that I'm referring to, and you'll see it listed this way in the, in the transmittal letter, is our unreserved fund balance. So 100% of that fund balance is unreserved and available.
Okay. And then I just want to check my math. If it looks like the $257,000 that was allowed by referendum is included in the, is it considered in the income column? Because it's not considered under the budget deficit offset column.
So we are levying for it, we're showing it as a revenue, and we're showing it as an addition to our levy limit calculation.
Okay.
If you look at, under the, I think it's the first two lines of the revenue in the budget, the first one is the regular taxes that we're allowed to collect, and the second one is the additional $257,608, I believe is the number.
Okay. The reason I was asking was just to verify that if it wasn't for the ARPA funds and the referendum, we could potentially be over half a million dollars in the red this year, is that correct? Without those two sources of income? Okay.
It's 257, and then the ARPA fund usage was 196 or something, 197, something like that.
Right. Okay. And the other question I did have for you was, in the budget on page 21, I was just wondering if you could explain, I just don't understand this. Page 21, the debt mill rate actually is projected to continue to go up for the next few years? I think I know the answer why, but could you address that and just educate me on that one?
Yeah, the why is the municipal building project from, we did the borrowing in 2008.
Yep.
And so that was 20-year borrowing. And so if you look at the continuation of our debt service, you'll see it dramatically fall off in 2028 when the municipal buildings are paid off.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I figured.
We didn't ask to raise taxes to do that, we just asked to spend the money, right?
To do what?
To build the buildings.
Build the new buildings?
We didn't ask to raise taxes, we just said, can we spend this money? Is that about, is that right?
Well, we gave projections on what it would do to future.
What it would cost, yeah.
Tax levies. And we have come in significantly less than that because of the, coming in about a million dollars under budget on the project.
Thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Wayne, or Jackie, any questions?
I had.
Oh, you got more?
Go ahead. Okay, so I handed these out to everyone, and I just wanted to address the dredging project at the bark, at the mouth of the Bark River. I just wanted to bring up, because I've had, this has been a very big issue for my district. I just want to point out, these are estimates and kind of examples, not exact numbers. But I wanted to point out that our lake parcels are approximately 21% of the total residential lots in the city, and they account for 34% of the residential contribution to the budget, to the levy amount that is paid. That's approximately $631,000 that is funded directly by the value of the lake, the property values of the lake. And when you look at that number, I mean, that's an annual number, when you look at that number compared to what we spend to maintain the lake, it's really depressing. It's really, I mean, it's borderline negligence, and the lake is deteriorating. The area around the Bark River is not navigable, it's not safe. And the residents there in 2013 paid 400, over $420,000 to dredge along the shoreline, thinking that we would be taking care of that middle mound that has now settled into everything that they did. We completely undermined their contribution to the city because they don't own the lake.
Yeah, the city doesn't either. The state owns the lake. But, yeah, I support what you're saying.
We're responsible for the lake, and we're responsible for maintaining the lake. That's, that's not their responsibility. And they did that, they contributed to.
I know, I supported the dredging.
So, yeah, so I just want to point out that I, the reason I'm bringing this up is I don't think the $185,000 that they asked for, that the Lake Welfare has asked for, is enough. I think it should be more than that, because what they asked for was just enough to basically skim the top of that, that mound, that island that has been created there. And it's going to get, it doesn't account for the future sediment that's going to be distributed there. The original plan, when they requested the $500,000 back when they did the, was so that it would fall in there, and it would not just build the island back up immediately, it would last for years. And I just, I feel like as much as we can do, the cost of setting up the dredging is the same whether we do three feet or a lot, or nearly the same. So the more we can do each time dredging, the longer, exponentially longer it's going to last. So the more money that we can give to them right now to do this, if we're going to do it, I think it should be more than $185,000. So that's just where I'm, my input on that. Thank you.
You haven't heard from Mike at all, have you, regarding any engineering costs? I mean, I haven't spoke to him since the meeting.
Mike Court?
No, Mike, well, either one, Mike or Mike. Mike Houseman or Mike Court?
I think he was referencing Houseman, though, weren't you?
I'm sorry, yes. What did I say?
So there's an amount in there to cover, if approved, the engineering costs for it? You mean the pre-work that Mike Houseman's?
Right.
I do not have an update.
Okay. All right. Because that is an unknown. Just to clarify, up to $50,000 of that 185 could be spent on the engineering kind of pre-work costs. Anything that is not spent on engineering would go towards the total 185. As Mike Houseman had mentioned, he came in with a recommendation of about two-thirds of that, and it was the Lake Welfare Committee that decided that wasn't enough. So pretty unanimously, the committee members upped that because we felt it was an asset to the community, not just to lake property owners. So not that I'm adding anything or clarifying, but just, that's where we came up with that decision, so.
Right. I just think that it should be more, like, the more we take out, the longer it's going to last.
There's truth in that. I will also say, I think it was kind of a compromise. We were also told by Sewer PAC, they weren't 100% on board, well, Dale from Sewer PAC was not 100% on board, that that was the best way to spend the money. He was actually more in favor of trying to stop it before it even gets to the lake in the first place, doing things upstream, not even to mitigate it, but just to prevent it from getting into the river. So he said you could do it if you want, if navigation is the priority, if safety in the lake is the priority, that's one thing, but to actually try and stop the silt from getting in the lake, there's other ways to do that. So I think the committee was pretty much saying, there's a big mound in the way, address that. And then maybe we can turn to less beautiful possibilities in the future like O'Conne Walk is doing, so, but that's for another day.
And I agree with Sewer PAC that, over all my years, that addressing the problem up top pays dividends for a long time. Unfortunately, there's not in our control. But getting them to participate and talking to farmers and things like that is definitely something the Lake Welfare Committee could proactively go and work. There are grants for farmers to do those types of things upriver, right? It would be, it'd be nice if the Lake Welfare Committee could maybe take that on as part of their processes, maybe pick a particular individual property owner or two, because we have a map that identifies the most infatible properties to minimize sediment coming upstream into Lake Nygawicka via the Bark River. And maybe pick a couple and try to work them over time, right? Because that is, we have no enforcement, we can't give, all we could do is try to help educate them, right? Which this, and that's kind of the job of the Lake Welfare Committee, we're trying to educate new residents to move onto the lake, and, you know, education is really their primary focus, has been always been my opinion. Do you have any comments on the budget? Or Wayne, or Jackie?
No, I think there'll be, there's, we'll have a good discussion two weeks when we pass it.
All right, I'll move on.
One more question. Actually, I was just reminded, with the $50,000 allocated for the, is that engineering, basically, for the Liberty Park stage area? Is that, that's what it's considered, right? Engineering?
Engineering, architecture, coming up with some kind of conceptual plan, getting Plan Commission approval on something.
So that would be?
Cost estimating.
Okay. So that's one step to try and get the process going. So that's kind of like the initial commitment to the big project, which we've got down for 2024.
To help define whatever the future project would be.
Okay.
Right now, nobody knows if that future project is really going to be $400,000, or $500,000, or $700,000, and so this is a step in the direction of trying to bring definition to that.
Will that, I think I know the answer, but will that $50,000 do anything to talk to the nonprofit organizations that might use it? Because every other stage like this, whether it's the South Shore Performance Center, or if it's even the Mullet Center, Arrowhead, the Sharon Lynn Wilson in Brookfield, they're pretty much run and operated by nonprofits. So there's that relationship that's making those places work. That $50,000 isn't looking into that at all, is it? That's just looking into the.
I don't anticipate that that's going to cost money to do that. I think that's going to cost people time to do that, you know, between city staff, Park and Rec Commission members. I know Matt Grimmer would likely be involved in that. So I'm not anticipating that that's something that we're going to pay somebody to do.
I was thinking as far as doing the number crunching to see if a nonprofit actually is viable, if a nonprofit comes forward, are their numbers, doing due diligence, are their numbers actually in line with what they truly could support? That's the only thing I was thinking of, so.
Yeah, and like I said.
are their numbers, doing due diligence, are their numbers actually in line with what they truly could support? That's, that's the only thing I was thinking of, so.
Yeah, and like I said, you know, if, if that effort involves myself, my salary is built into the benefit, into the budget elsewhere. So it wouldn't be coming out of that.
Okay.
And then I would anticipate, like I said, Park and Rec Commission volunteers and people from the Arts Foundation being involved in that on a voluntary basis.
Okay.
At our budget workshop, they, the Parks, Promotion and Tourism said that they, that would be something that they would be willing to fund or that they would potentially be willing to fund as far as this $50,000. If they agree to fund that, does that still come out of our, like, us approving it here? How does that work with, with them funding it? Like, would, if we turned it down, could they still approve it?
I would anticipate that this is largely going to go towards a consultant contract.
Okay.
There would be a contract with the city. And so the city would need the funds to pay that. So I think the mechanism would be that they would, don't make a contribution to the city for what they wanted to contribute towards the project.
So if they, if they are going to agree to fund the entire thing, do we need to have it in our budget?
Who's "they"?
Promotion and Tourism.
Oh.
Because she, she said at our budget workshop that.
When she said that, I thought she was talking about construction. I don't know if she was talking about planning and design.
Okay.
And she just left.
And I think she blurted it out too, and I don't know that it was.
Yeah, she left.
You know, Promotion and Tourism, it's the commission that makes those decisions.
Sure, I'm just wondering, but I'm speaking hypothetically, like, if the, if the.
We're trying to get our lost operating budget money back first.
Well, I'm just trying to figure, well, if, if that's something that would be funded by the Promotion Tourism, does it need to be in our budget?
Would it be reflected as a?
So let me, let me put it this way with regards to considering our budget issues and how levy limits work in the, in the state. But one potential mechanism that could work well, if Promotion and Tourism wants to pay for the construction.
Or part.
Or part of it, would, would, would be to follow the same model we've done with paths, where the city borrows for the funds, and then Tourism makes the debt service payments towards them. What the city gains by that is when you borrow, you can increase your levy limit by the amount that you borrow. So we could raise our levy limits, which is typically allowable because you've got to make those debt service payments. But since someone else will make those debt service payments for us, we could then use that excess capacity to pay for operating budget items.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, good question. Good question. Okay, I'm not seeing any more, so I'm going to move on. Okay, 12, Reports of City Officials, City Administrator.
The only thing that I have is a reminder that this.
Did I, oh, I'm sorry. Hold off there, Tom, I, I missed one. 11B, Approval Vouchers.
Move to approve the voucher list.
All second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions passes, thank you. All right, try this again. Number 12A, City Administrator.
Yep, the only item that I have is a reminder that this Wednesday, November 3rd, we do have the emergency operations training. That's at 6:30 PM at the Wales and Genesee Fire Station. And as of right now, I've heard back from two of the elected officials that they will be in attendance.
Enjoy.
That's this Wednesday?
Yes, in two days.
Okay, city clerk? All righty, city treasurer, September 2021 Treasurers Report. The requests, council request for future agenda items. Seeing none, you can always submit them to administrator or staff. Seeing no further business, we are now adjourned at 8:55. Thank you, everyone.